...to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Bickman?
Present.
Beesinger?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
Echis?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Gross?
Present.
Schroller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right, the first item is approval amendments from the July 24th meeting. I don't have any amendments. Does anyone have amendments?
Move to approve the minutes of the July 24th, 2017 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. The next item is public comments. If you would like to share, you're welcome to come to the podium for five minutes. You give your first and last name, your address, and your ward. All right, we'll move on to business and discussion items. The first item is the Chamber of Commerce gravel dash requests. Brenda, you're here.
I'm here. I'm Brenda Stagamore with the Mayor's Chamber of Commerce. You all should have gotten our letter and a couple of maps. We are requesting, we're planning our fourth annual Pony Express gravel dash on September 9th. And we are, we now have 11 states and Canada representative coming. And we are requesting closure of the streets. In the past, we have closed, we had asked for it closed 4:30 a.m. to about 7:30 and then open back up and then close again at 11 to 7 p.m. This year, we're requesting that when we start at 4:30 a.m., if we could leave it closed till 7 p.m. Partly because the ride starts less than an hour after that. We're having a short 20-mile ride to Okeechobee and back that's going to start from there. And then right after that, we're planning a child's bike ride. It's going to be starting. By the time that gets done, the other riders will be probably within the hour will be coming back. The map kind of shows the area. The cones there at 8th Street would come down after the ride starts and they get gone and we just go back to the barricaded area. We also would like some picnic tables moved in like we have in the past. Unlock the restroom at Main Street for the day. Use of the sound system again. Flying the flags over the overpasses, the welcome flags in downtown. Use of the showers at the Aquatics Center in the afternoon, which we've done in the past. I have talked to Ricky Bickman and she said that she was the one that sat down there and just sat there and let them come in and shower. And she'd be willing to do that again if it's okay with you guys. And then also allow the wagon wheel to serve food and beer in the barricaded area for the The map where she got. And then the one kids' one-mile bike race. I attached the map to that. It just kind of showed where they were going. The little red crosses, which we are working with, Boy Scout Troop 180. They are going to kind of take charge of it that day for us. And those red crosses will there, will be where they will have supervision at each corner so to kind of watch for traffic since a couple of those places really will be not barricaded off. But they will kind of control traffic while the kids are on their bike ride.
Yes, what about the farmer's market?
I have not talked to Brian yet, but I, last year, they were in and out. They were in the 7th Street corridor where they normally were and it didn't conflict with us.
You guys are going to stop at 11, aren't you?
And it didn't conflict with us. I was going to ask him that if possible, you know, if they didn't feel comfortable with that, if they could move it maybe to the Hellbrink parking lot, just half a block south. I don't know. I mean, if they come in from the, it'd be the problem with us having to move the barricades would be the only thing. It's kind of nice to, with the kids, we might have to set it up. But I was going to ask him if they could move it south, if it would work for them. But I just haven't gotten that far yet.
Have you contacted Joe's Bar about anything?
Not yet. He's on my list to do.
Okay.
I know in the past he hasn't done anything, but I will, yeah. He's on my list to do to tell him, yes.
So you're talking about the showers and the pool. Won't the pool be all cleaned up by then?
I mean, I don't.
Chloe?
It should be cleaned up by then.
I mean, they should be all ready to be closed. So how do you do that, Brenda? Because last year it was Maria and Ricky.
Right.
So this year, we have Chloe who's going off to school, right?
Yeah, and I said that if Ricky was able to open it or just like unlock the doors in the showers, I feel like they should be able to use it. The only thing with the showers.
Do you want to come up to the podium, Chloe?
The only thing with the showers is that they have to be winterized. So that's the city or the water department that does that. So they just take the things off the wall, the showers off the walls and put like antifreeze in the sinks and the toilets. So all that would just have to be done after September, after they use it, if they wanted to use it. But other than that, all the bathrooms would be clean. And if they need to be cleaned after they use it, I don't have a problem having to come back on a weekend to clean it. It's fine.
Okay, so the winterizing is all done by the water sewer department?
Yeah.
And it totally has been done after the gravel dash?
Yeah, if they've been using it, yes.
It just has to be done before water freezes or...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for being flexible. The other thing is on the barricades, are you going to have those signs that say no alcohol?
Yep.
Beyond these points?
They're already made.
And Brenda, I have a question about the sound system. I mean, the car club was real concerned because one unit was completely destroyed last year by some other group.
What was it?
For the sound system.
What was destroyed?
I don't know.
I hadn't heard, I just hadn't heard that. That's why I was curious.
So.
So who's?
The thing is, we've always said, who is responsible for the sound system? I don't think we've ever really, have we clarified that? Who's sound system it is?
It was purchased by multiple people.
Right.
And there was never a, it's always just been left. We have the whatever, the amp or whatever sitting here. It's always just, I mean, that's...
I would think that if it's installed on city property, on city poles, then it should be under the R.O.S.
Our discretion.
Yeah.
But it wasn't. I don't know who set it up last year, but they completely ruined the...
What, do you know the details of what happened? I've heard nothing of it.
Was it at the gravel dash specifically?
I don't know. They just realized that one...
Just before the car show.
Before the car show.
They were trying to set it up. And that, but the car show sent it off to a sound person to get it fixed.
Were they overloaded it?
Well, between the gravel dash was Black Squirrel Night. The sound system was used.
But who will, who will set it up?
We don't, we don't have, that's the problem. Nobody has a sound engineer other than actually the car show has the sound person. We don't have one on staff. Dave just does the speakers.
Mm-hmm. And my son has a K-State football game next day.
When we did it last year...
Or that day.
When we did it last year, I got it from Dave and he showed us how to do it again and Brad and Sharon, or was it just Sharon? We hooked it up. She, we hooked Sharon's phone into it for our music.
He...
And beyond that, I don't know. I mean, it worked then and I don't know what.
I mean, that's, that's the problem. We don't have an expert on staff.
Right.
And that's, that's, neither does a lot of the groups that use it. So that's, that's an issue if, I agree that it's on city property and all that other stuff, that it shouldn't be our responsibility, but who, who sets it up? I mean, that's, that's the problem. Dave will admit himself that he's not an expert at it.
So would you be willing to take some night classes, Austin?
I'd take a fee too.
So they're asking for the use of sound system?
Written instructions plus diagrams for everybody that stays with it.
So you're requesting the use of sound system, but really you want somebody to come hook it up as well? Not just the use?
We hooked all the, we hooked, basically, we just had those poles right there by the front of the wagon wheel and the one across the street, the two across the street. Those are the only three that we had hooked up. And then we plugged the rest of it in. We had the box, whatever it's called, the receiver or whatever it's called.
So are you okay with?
That, that's what was damaged.
We can figure something out.
The receiver is damaged?
The receiver was damaged.
Well, whatever it's called, I'm not...
I know it was used Black Squirrel Night, but it worked then.
Well, I guess the key point is allowing her, them to use it, but if it is damaged, they would replace it. Does that make fair enough? Fair enough?
If we damage it, yeah, I would, yeah, but I guess. I don't know.
If somebody damages it, or if somebody sticks it, pulls it, puts it away, probably won't know until the next round goes and tries to use it.
We'll go test it.
So what's our recourse?
Well, we could probably test it afterwards. I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, but that's the problem. How do we know it's wrong or if we're just doing it wrong? That's, that's the question.
So we got a city, it's on the city poles. It really needs to be used for everybody. It can't be one event. I mean, I think they need to have...
That was part of the pitch behind our funding of it too.
Yeah, no, and it's, it's fine. I agree we should have it used, but there's got to be, we got to figure out how to use it. I guess that's the point. Or find somebody who knows.
I wonder if we just need to buy a less, if we're just, like gravel dash, we'll use two speakers. I wonder if we just need to buy a less expensive receiver, just an amplifier that let the car show, because they use the whole system, just buy a $40 amplifier.
Do we, do you know what the breakout was of the receiver? Do you know what it cost and if getting it fixed or any of that? I just, I guess I would have liked to have known that that happened just so we could kind of address this then, you know?
Did they ever get it back?
Michelle told me it was still sitting in her office.
As in repaired in her office? I thought it, your son, your son, no, we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Well, we probably need to get some procedures in place going forward. But you can use whatever sound system works if they approve it, so.
Let me know what you find out. So I have to need to look elsewhere, I can.
Okay.
Brenda, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to ask if you're considering moving the farmer's market onto the Hellbrink site. Have you all checked to make sure there's not a sale that day or any event at the Hellbrink Center?
Yeah, I need to check into that. I haven't gotten that, yeah.
Well, the last time we moved the farmer's market, we put it in the pool parking lot and they said it worked out really well. So I think that's the place to be.
That's another option.
Yeah. I mean, I think that is the option.
A better option?
Because it's a better option because pool's not open during the, those hours and the parking lot's open.
They're gone.
I like that option.
That's a good idea.
And Brian loved it, so.
Okay.
And so the sign needs to notify people that it's there.
He set it up, yeah. They figured it out.
Set it up?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from Brenda? Would someone entertain a motion?
We approve the request from Chamber of Commerce for gravel dash as written.
Second.
And any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you for coming, Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is the resolution that's on page eight regarding the gravel dash that's required for the alcohol that's going to be consumed on our city property.
Move to approve Resolution 2017-03 gravel dash Beer Garden and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, thank you very much. Chloe Cudney, you're back up.
Okay, good evening. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Chloe Cudney and my sister and I have managed the pool this summer. And I just wanted to come tonight and share some highlights of the season with you all. I know you've all been given papers of what we've made throughout our admissions counter and some records from our detailed daily reports throughout the season as of August 10th, 2017. So over the summer, we have hosted many different activities. Some weeks were so busy, we had people in the pool from 6 a.m. to 8 p.m. at night and sometimes even till 10 p.m. if there was a pool party. This year, we had the adult lap swim in the morning. We had high school swim team practice. We had swim team practice. We had private and group swim lessons, parent and child aquatics, water aerobics, free swim, 16 pool parties, and the regular one to eight hours for the public to swim. These numbers that I'm going to share are recorded as of August 10th, 2017. So the number of pool passes sold this year were 359. The revenue from these passes were $27,000. From our detailed daily reports, we have had about 4,139 people pay admissions. And the most that we've had pay regular admissions in one day was 150 people. For pass holders, the most we have had attend in one day altogether was 266. The average number per day for pass holders was 129. Lap swim has been really popular this year, starting from the first day and being consistent throughout the season. Our highest number of lap swimmers for one morning was 43 and the average has been 24. Water aerobics started June 6th and has continued throughout the season every Tuesday and Thursday at 5:30 p.m. to about 6:30 p.m. Attendance has been pretty impressive over the season and many people have become regulars to the class. The most that we've had for one class was 31 people and the average is 17. We charge $2 for those who don't have a pool pass to attend the class. And as of 8:10, we have made $266 off of water aerobics alone. On Wednesdays, we offer free swim from 6 p.m. to 8 p.m. The total tally for free swim is 465 so far. The most in one day has been 82. On July 4th, we offered free swim for the holiday and we were very busy with a total of 450 people for the day and we were open from 1 to 6 p.m. Many of these patrons stayed for hours too, so there wasn't any empty chairs. The holiday was really fun. The guards wore patriotic t-shirts, sunglasses or hats, just something fun that didn't interfere with their uniform or duty. We played patriotic music throughout the day too and we hung up the American flag. We have hosted many pool parties this year, each costing $150. Many organizations and families take advantage of these pool parties to celebrate hard work or birthdays or reunions. And these pool parties occur 8:15 p.m. to 10 p.m. We have had 16 on the schedule, so with that, we bring in a revenue from these parties of $2,400. For swimming lessons, we offered private swimming lessons for children four and up, group swimming lessons for children five and up, and we also offered parent and child aquatics for children six months to three years of age. We had 80 children participate in private lessons, 47 participate in group lessons, and 10 pairs of parents and child participate in parent and child aquatics. The revenue from lessons this year was around 5,000. Swimming lessons were my favorite part of the summer because I enjoyed getting to see, getting to teach the children how to swim and see their improvement over the week or weeks, depending on the lessons they attended. The excitement on their faces when they master a new skill or pass a level that they have struggled with for a few summers is priceless and makes all the organizing and hard work put into these lessons worth it. And as our season is coming to an end, we have started prepping the bathhouse for storage by cleaning and taking inventory of everything in the building. A list is in progress for repairs, improvements, and replacements needed for next year and will continue to be put together up to and past the closing date. Cleaning and prepping for both the bathhouse and pool for the winter will occur as we approach closer to the end of the season. I'd like to mention a few new things that we did this season. Every day inventory in the concession stand was counted manually and recorded and then compared to the previous day's report and then, and the computer system as well. Also, all the cardboard that comes and goes through the facility, like the concession stand and everything, has been recycled along with plastic bottles we have collected in our blue recycling bins, both on deck and inside the building. We had three in services this year, which is where the staff comes together. We go over our EAP, which is Emergency Action Plan. Once in service, we had the EMS involved and some guards actually got to go in the EMS and like what that procedure was. And they were really great at telling us like what would happen, what could happen, and giving us some tips as well. We do team, team building activities. We did a relay, which was really fun. And we also did synchronized swimming, which was really fun to see them work together. And then we go over our lifeguarding skills just so they have a refresher as well as our AED skills and CPR. I would like to go over some important dates to keep in mind as our season comes to a close. This week will be our last week to be open throughout the weekdays for the 1 p.m. to 8 p.m. swim. After August 20th, we will only be open on the weekends with the following hours. So Saturday will be 1 to 8 p.m. and Sundays, 1 to 6 p.m. Our last day of the season will be Sunday, September 3rd. For those interested in the 6 a.m. to 8 a.m. lap swim or the 11:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. lap swim, these will continue to August 25th, but August 25th will be the last day for lap swim. And lastly, on August 20th, we will celebrate the solar eclipse by extending the swimming hours for this day only from 1 p.m. to 10 p.m. for the public. After 8 p.m., admissions will be half priced, so $4 to $2. That is all I have and I thank you for your time. And I will now open the floor for any questions if anyone has any.
I appreciate your various updates during the summer.
Thank you.
And appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
I think your report was very thorough and very helpful and made us think about areas that we haven't always thought about. And what you've added to the, the schedule is very helpful as well to know what's going on down there. And I had a couple of questions. If you had 15 pool parties, did you have one almost every weekend day? 15, there's the pool.
A lot of them happen in late August and July. Yeah, July and August are our big month. We just got done, we had a pool party.
I guess you can have it any day of the week.
Yeah, you can have it any day of the week, but weekends are more popular. We had one the 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, so four days in a row, we just had four pool parties, so.
So cool. And on the swim lessons, do you teach all levels? Is there a certain level you teach to?
We do the Learn to Swim program. So it's level one to level six. With WSI certification, you can teach adult swim, adult swim lessons, you can teach the Learn to Swim, you can teach preschool aquatics, parent and child aquatics, basic water safety, so a variety of things. But we just do the Learn to Swim and we did the parent and child aquatics.
So when you get to level six, what do they have to do next to become a lifeguard?
Oh, then they have to go through the American Red Cross certification. I'm not trained to do that.
Okay, so do you have people coming up that, or have passed level six for next year?
Usually the people that participate in some lessons are under the age of 12 years or older.
So none of them really, you're not training them up to roll in next year, okay?
Yeah, they have to be 15 to be a lifeguard.
Okay. And I just want to thank you also for, from everything I've read, you've handled issues that have come out up at the pool very well.
Thank you.
And concisely and made a decision in good judgment, so thank you for that.
Thank you, yeah.
I want to thank you too. The pool is in my ward and I have people come and talk to me about what goes on or an incident and how it was handled. And all of it was good. All, all of it was compliments. I did not get anything bad said about the pool or how it was being run. I appreciate what you and Claire have done this year. I appreciate the extra programs. If you have time, if all of a sudden you have a black spot, like when the swim team got through the pool and you came up with another program. And this idea of on eclipse night to go ahead and add the extra hours, we're making a couple more dollars, but it gives people an opportunity. We really need to get that out there so people know it's available that day. But that is such a good idea.
And Austin helped me come up with that one.
Thank you, Austin.
A little bit. We kind of have an idea.
You did make the right decision in hiring Austin, then I guess.
Extra swim time. That's what I'm here for.
I'm looking forward. When you hit your final tally on the concession stand, I'll really be looking forward to that because from what I've seen and the way you've worded, I think that for once, we're going to come out with a positive from the concession stand. And I appreciate that you've been on top of this. I mean, the daily count, I don't know if that's ever been done before, but that is above and beyond the call of duty and thank you very much for taking that initiative. It wasn't asked of you, you thought of that. So thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Good luck at school.
Thank you.
And come back next summer.
Yes.
Please, please. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
All right, moving along is the homecoming tailgate party. Is someone here for that?
This was just a letter they sent.
I was looking around to see if we had such an audience. I thought maybe someone... Okay, so United Bank and Trust want to walk off the city park for their annual tailgate party for a football game on September 15th.
Move to approve the request for United Bank and Trust Friday, September 15th.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. I wonder if they're, where they're going to access the field from the city park? You think they're going to go over by the VAG building?
Probably.
Not that it matters, but for what?
The VAG, how they got to get to the park, football field for the...
From the city park?
Oh, that's right.
Because of all that construction going on.
Where the band usually marches into the stadium from the park is blocked off.
So I don't know how they're going to do it. No one's here, so I, we can't ask, I don't.
They'll get there.
Okay, moving along, the next one is from Gudenkopf. He would like a key for the dump. He claims here? No. Okay. My only question was when he made that request, do you clarify that it's for clippings and mayor's...
I think, yeah, I think they tell him that.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that...
Mayor, from what I understand, he already has a key and the key is bent or something. He's been using the dump.
He's getting a replacement one.
This is a replacement key.
Did he already have one?
It's a really, really old one.
Was he always on, been on our list?
I don't know that he ever had anything formal.
Oh, okay.
So we don't need to vet him.
So thank you for, well, it's good for them to clarify that it's for mayor's residence only. So would anyone like to entertain, that would entertain a motion?
Move to approve the dump key request for Gudenkopf tree service.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right, at this moment...
Sorry, I should have gone earlier. I've never been to the city council before.
Well, I was waiting for you to come up, so come on up.
I'm so sorry. I'm here, I'm representing the cheerleaders. My name is Catherine Lauer. We are requesting if it would be okay for us to have a bonfire the night before homecoming. So that would be September 14th. We would start it around probably 7:30 to 8:00, whenever it got dark. We have already contacted the fire marshal and he will be there with a fire truck. And we did, we are going to clean up afterwards as well, so.
At Lakeview? At Lakeview?
Yes, we're going to have it, um, where we had it two years ago, if you remember.
I think there's still a big log there.
Is there really?
He went up and looked and there's nothing there. Dave made sure it wasn't, David made sure it wasn't there, but he did stress.
The log was there a long time.
Yeah, yeah. That you clean up immediately.
I think he was. You had huge.
We'll clean it up, don't worry. Yeah. The cheerleaders will take care of it and if not, we'll, you know, we'll round up some football boys.
You had huge wood pieces instead of smaller wood.
I know. It was a pretty, so, yes, we'll be, we'll be cleaning up.
So, uh, bonfire on the 14th?
Yes.
You're requesting? And, um, is there's no parade or anything that day?
No, that'll be the next day on the day of homecoming.
Okay.
Because the homecoming is September 15th, the Friday.
So this is a Thursday?
This is the Thursday, the night before.
Okay. And September 15th is the parade?
Yes.
Okay. You guys have it? And the fire chief is, was said he'll be present and take care of that?
Is it Lakeview?
It's, it was at Lakeview at the higher level?
Yes. On that hill up there.
The UP dorms used to be.
Yes.
Let's see. What, last, last time, was anyone else up there? I was up there. You were up there, Kevin, weren't you?
I was up there, yeah.
And what, there wasn't much light? What was the problem with the crowds and the fire? I can't remember.
I don't remember what it was. It just.
Was it because it wasn't marked off very well?
I think it was probably it.
Yeah, so I think just to make sure there's some type of, even some type of barrier around the fire or something. Do you remember the, I wish the chief was here, but.
It just seemed like everybody pushed in on the incident, so.
Yeah.
Keeping back a little bit, so.
So just some kind of barrier, maybe just rocks. I don't know, something simple. Don't bring in big logs, but. Okay, would anyone, uh, make that motion?
Move to approve the MHS cheerleaders to sponsor a bonfire, September 14th, starting when? What are the hours?
Probably 7:30, about 10:00. So we do have school the next day, so I'm assuming it wouldn't end up too late.
7:30 to 10:00 PM, uh, September 14th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Just so you know, in public comment.
I know, I know, I'm sorry.
As your opportunity always comes up.
I'm so sorry about that. Thank you guys so much.
So we hope you come back again.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Catherine.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to recess the city council, regular city council meeting.
Move to recess regular minute, or council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. And now I'd like to call to order the Public Building Commission. Roll call, please. We zoomed right through that, didn't we?
Baikman?
Present.
B. Singer?
Present.
Boss?
Present.
E. Kiss?
Present.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Present.
Stroller?
Present.
Throm?
Present.
We have a quorum.
All right. And what we need to do with the Public Building Commission is to make the bond payment of $224,245. And as you can see, the PBC balance is 582, almost 582,000. So I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve, um, the swimming pool bond payment of $224,245 to the Kansas State Treasurer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the PBC.
Move to adjourn the Public Building Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. Now we'll resume the regular order of business. The next item is the hearing for our, the public hearing for 2018 budget. And as was published in the paper, um, we're asking for adware taxes of $1,923,776. That should give us a mill levy that's been consistent for the last four years. So I would, is there any public comments at this time?
Dear Mayor and governing body, my name is Rick Shane, 1301 Olson in the Fourth Ward. I know that the annual budget process is nearly complete. The 2018 budget, subject to council approval of the published budget tonight. The budget can be a stressful time for all members of the governing body and staff, and I'm sure each of you will be relieved when it is adopted. I'm here tonight to address two topics in the 2018 budget. The first and most important topic is a decision to not levy into bond and interest fund for 2018. With final payment due next year on the fire trucks, the opportunity to use the remaining budget authority to fund a major improvement project and have it paid for in a very short time will be lost. At the June budget workshop, Councilmember Fry attempted to pursue discussion of continuing with bond and interest levy, but his request was overruled and discussion was not allowed on the matter. I commend Councilmember Fry for attempting to openly discuss the matter. The current bond and interest mill levy of 8.395 mils would produce $239,551 for that fund, an amount that would, over a period of two or three years, generate more than enough funds to pay off a temporary note to make the improvements on South 11th Road that have been under consideration for some time now. Coupling those dollars with some possible level of assessments on the project, there might have even been enough funds generated to also improve Keystone Road and have the whole project paid for in four or five years with a temporary note or short-term bond, and no effect on the overall mill levy in the future, still leaving additional dollars from carryover and personal property taxes to fund other smaller projects at the same time. Foregoing the bond and interest mill levy in 2018 in favor of transferring it to the general fund to be used mainly for the purpose of a new $200,000-plus street sweeper can be compared to a homeowner who, when their mortgage is paid off and they have funds available to make a major improvement to their property and add value for the future, chooses instead to purchase a new Cadillac to drive only on specific occasions. The funds lost in 2018 for this opportunity will not be recouped. Fortunately, City Administrator St. John has the foresight to know that repeating the same process for 2019 is not advisable. My belief, based on nearly three decades of municipal experiences, that you should have sought the advice and wisdom of the city's financial advisor before undertaking this move. My second point is to make, uh, to make is one that has had very little discussion in the budget workshops and was barely mentioned at all by any member of the governing body, and that is to transfer $10,000 from the swimming pool tax fund to the general fund. This transfer is being made under the guise of reimbursing the general fund for payroll expenses in conjunction with issuing passes and other activities related to the pool administration. When the pool sales tax issue was proposed to the public, the governing body at that time verbally promised the voters that the sales tax for the pool would not be transferred or used for other purposes other than the pool, regardless of the specific legal language on the ballot concerning, quote, "other governmental uses," unquote. This transfer violates the public trust that was placed with the approving governing body, and the public should not forget or ignore that this transfer is just the first step in trying to use those sales tax dollars for other purposes currently disguised as a reimbursement. I take a promise to the public in matters such as this, as a matter of integrity and principle, and this governing body should not have approved budgeting for this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. All right. Anyone else would like to share? All right. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget as published.
Move to approve the 2018 budget as discussed, as written, as published.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Six two? All right.
Just happened to find that in place.
Oh, yes. Kevin, you have one that you can start passing around?
Yep.
We'll just wait a minute and get this done.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion, please.
All right.
Last item, number four, convention and tourism requests.
Okay.
If you turn to page 25, actually, it's 26, uh, these look like, uh, requests, requests for, uh, funds to me. Why is it in this, why is it in the consent agenda?
Remember when we asked them to make a list of all their requests? And the consent agenda is supposed, is for reoccurring items, right?
Well, these aren't reoccurring items. New rep for billboard.
Well, they're reoccurring in as much as the convention and tourism has requests. Did you have a problem with one specific item there?
Well, no, but I just think that, you know, we both through here and we spent thousands of dollars under the consent agenda and, uh, it was never discussed or it's, or the public never really knows what it's for. And there's what, a thousand, about $1,300 here for bottled water, lens and installation, registration fee, um, Ali Argo is paying her mileage to go to a conference and rapid installation. And I wanted to comment, um, this new wrap for the billboard at the intersection of Highway 36 and 77, uh, out here to comment, it's $685. Out here, it says Bart Thomas from Thomas Outdoor Manhattan will print and install, and Mandy and Michelle are designing. Well, now, are there fees involved in this for Mandy and Michelle to design this?
No.
Remember when we had, uh, when we changed, when the travel and tourism wanted to change our logo from the horse and the black squirrel to these do, 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 to the three backward commas? That was $22,000. And I'm looking here and, uh, two people are designing this and I don't see any, any money. So we're not paying for the design.
There's no money. We, we are fortunate to have, to hire a, uh, a really good designer and, uh, as well as have Mandy on, on the board, which she's also a really talented designer, so.
Last name?
Mandy, um.
Keller?
Mandy Keller and Michelle, Michelle.
Whitezel. Yep. They're both really good designers and we, they're both, uh, able to help us out in this, to save us the design fee, if you will.
So there's no design fee for this?
Right.
Well, let's say City of Marysville on it.
They, I had some examples. It's, uh, one, uh, well, we're not going with that one. Um, it should say City of Marysville.
Okay. Exactly. You're smiling, darling. That's what you always say. You want to make sure it says City of Marysville on it. So surely it says City of Marysville, it's outside the City of Marysville.
They want, we want them to come to City of Marysville.
Yes. Okay.
And I have a question too. The registration fee, that's for Michelle, isn't it?
No, this one, we had already had, uh, approved to pay Michelle's. We're paying, this is for Ally to go. Uh, and she is going to be driving them down there. So she's donating her vehicle to get them down there.
Well, I'd like to say that, uh, having, having Mandy and Michelle designing this is a whole lot better than hiring somebody from out of town for $22,000. So I think we have already, you know, and this, this justifies, one, hiring Michelle for the position she's in, and, and thank you to Mandy.
Okay. So, but you know this is a billboard, not a logo.
Well, still.
Okay. I just want to make sure you understood what it was.
I mean, they're, it's a keeping with that, that they designed, they've got brochures and, you know, that's, that's the role of the director and the board.
They've been very well done. They're very active too. They're very active in getting out there and getting our name on the television. Yes. Okay, I just wanted to, uh, know why that was in, uh, consent agenda before we approved it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right. And at this time, before we approve the appropriations ordinance, I think we need to, um, discuss item four on page 32, which is yours, which is the prepayment, which is included in the appropriations ordinance. So you are requesting, uh, you want to discuss number four?
Okay.
Is there any objection to go discuss, um, about Randy Rickorick or?
Rickorick, yeah.
Page 33, item four?
See, I go to my report, uh, Kester Restaurant Steps contingency payment.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, as was the, was, uh, discussed in the original bid document, uh, Randy needs an upfront payment to pay for the stone, uh, for the, for the, uh, from the quarry, or from the, uh, stone company out of Amigo, and the upfront cost of renting the equipment. Uh, the total of his bid was 55, 50, $57,000, I believe. Uh, so this would be 19,000 of that initial bid, uh, so he can pay for this stuff.
So I just thought we should approve this because the, the check written to Randy is in our appropriations ordinance. So I would entertain a motion to approve this, um, prepayment?
Move to approve the contingencies, contingency payment of 19,251 dollars to Randy Rickorick for the Kester Restaurant Steps.
Second.
And those monies are coming out of the industrial?
Industrial fund, yes.
Out of the industrial fund?
Industrial fund.
Again, who was our second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. Thank you very much. Now we can go back to the appropriations ordinance, which includes that prepayment.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3656 in the amount of $723,233.89. And I might mention that, uh, the reason it's so large this time is a swimming pool sales tax will be 302,866 dollars come out of that. And bond and interest number one, and that's for the Breeding Heights and Lagoons and 152,362 dollars.
So about 431,000 of it is debt, which explains what, $723,000?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for noting that. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion? Thank you. Um, I note on here that we have spent over $400 on Gatorade and, uh, from my understanding, that it has electrolytes in it, that's why it's necessary, but I'm asking, now that all departments are buying it, uh, we bought over, what, 30 different packs of this stuff? And my, my question is, are we going to stop doing that come September when the heat goes down and there, I mean, this isn't an ongoing thing, right? This is the first summer that we've actually done this for all departments. So kind of what is our, what is the?
What's the policy?
What's the policy?
It should be ramped down. When the heat goes down, they shouldn't, they'll be out, um, in less heat, so we'll see that go down.
Okay. Then on concessions, $1,958 pop, uh, $453. Uh, are we winding down on the purchases? Those are for the pool?
Yeah, we should, we should be winding down, uh, those because of how it's being built. We're just paying for last month's, I believe.
Okay. Then I have a question about, uh.
Can I clarify a question of yours? I think she's asking, is the city going to buy Gatorade beyond the summer season? Is that your question?
That is, that's it.
And is the, your answer? You said it would scale down, but will we continue or not?
We, um, at some point, we will stop. Depends on if it's still getting in the 90s.
Well, I understand that, but just, you're, you're just saying like October 1?
We're going to stop. We're going to stop. Yeah. It's not a year-round thing.
I just wanted to clarify her question.
Yeah.
I thought was her question. Sorry, Vic.
That's okay. Thank you for the question. Um, and I see here we paid Marshall County Health Department for a Hep B vaccine. Do we do that for all employees?
Yeah.
That is?
Yeah.
Do we, do we do flu shots for employees?
That's a part of our, the flu shots are part of our insurance. The insurance base for that.
But I, this is the first time I've seen this Hep B on here. So I was wondering, do we mandate that all employees have that or do they request it or?
It's as a part of, it's our sewer. People who work around sewer are definitely. Yeah. Uh, yes.
So at their request or at their, at their desire, but not by mandate? We don't tell them they have to have it?
Whatever. I forget if there's a requirement. It's just, it's good policy.
It's available. It's available too. Okay.
To encourage?
We encourage that. Okay, then, um, I see the Kansas Department Health and Environment, the Breeding Heights sewer payment, uh, and Lagoon payment. Are we on the last of this? Are we, are we close to the last?
Yeah. We have half a payment in 2018.
Half a payment and that's it?
Yeah.
That's why we get to transfer so much to the, um, to the reserve fund next year.
Okay.
Because that debt's paid for.
Well, when I saw this come up, this $152,000, I thought, aren't we getting close to retiring this?
Yes.
Wouldn't that be nice to get a, to retire that? And why, under the Public Building Commission, this, why is the swimming pool payment considered a lease payment? Why is it listed here on the invoice approval list as lease payment?
That's technically what it is. I mean, it's...
Isn't it a loan?
PBC took out the loan. Public Building Commission took out the loan, and the swimming, and we, the city, pay a lease to the PBC.
It's, it's a lot of money moving.
Okay, I think that's... Thank you very much, that's all my questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Beckman?
Yes.
Beesinger?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Echus?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Gross?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Eight-zero.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, Austin, you're up.
All right. As we discussed last time, the Lee Dam Art Center is up for some HVAC replacements, and you requested that I go back and basically rebid with the higher efficiency units in mind, at least minimum sixteen seer on the AC units. I did that, every one of them, even the one that already had a bid in, rebid, and actually did himself a favor because he became, Electric came in with the lowest bid of eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-six for their high efficiency system, and that was, I believe, like twenty dollars less than Acme. So if, if you will, the recommendation is to go with the lowest bid.
Move to approve the low bid of eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars for the Lee Dam Art Center HVAC system to come out of HVAC, or come out of MER.
And only fifty-eight forty, fifty-eight forty seventy-three to come from the city, the rest come from MCAC.
Will they actually bill them separately?
No, it'll, well, that's a good point.
Or do we accept the total?
That's a good point, yes. Do the whole thing and then reiterate it.
To the MER?
That'd be the easiest way to do it.
So you'll, will you send a bill?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll send you a bill.
That's to Autolectric.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. One of them gives a ten-year limited warranty and the other one gives, there's no warranty ever done.
It's, it doesn't matter what kind of AC unit, even if it says ten-year warranty, it only has a one-year warranty because it's a commercial space. So regardless of what it says, even if it says a ten-year warranty, I went through that with one of our other AC units that was only seven years old, and it's, it's, once it's connected to a commercial space, it doesn't matter what it says, it's a one-year warranty.
Would you go over again where the money's going to come from? The MER, how that was going, I've tried to write it down?
Okay, so we are going to pay upfront the eleven hundred, one hundred, eleven thousand, eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Then we will go back and bill MCAC for five thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents to cover their side of the interior of the units.
Because they're paying for the fronts?
Yeah, they're paying, yeah, they're paying all, inside, yes. Paying the, they're paying the inside, we're paying the outside.
Okay, I'm sorry, and where did it come out of? The MER?
MER, yes.
Okay.
And then we will reimburse that next year by transferring money from the general fund to MER, just as a reimbursement, because we had planned to replace these units next year, but they came up.
That was part of our budget discussion, remember? We made that change at the last meeting.
Okay.
Okay, was there a second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau?
All right. Next one is Clink, and Daniel's here, if he's willing to discuss that. Yeah. If you want to discuss it all, do you want me to lay the groundwork?
Well, it's pretty short and sweet. Great to be here again this evening. What we, what you have in front of you is the bid information for the bid on the Clink project that was taken on August first. As you can see, we had one bidder, we did have one other that was a plan holder that I would call a general, and they chose not to bid with that, but our engineer's estimate of the project was five hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. The one bid received was Hall Brothers Inc. from Marysville in an amount of five hundred and eleven thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents. So I guess basically, in our recommendation, we would recommend the award to Hall Brothers. You also should have a bid tabulation that just shows the breakdown of the actual bid items, both of what our estimate was and what their actual bid was. We did review their bid, as submitted, there was no errors or omissions or corrections found on that, so with that, I guess I'll open to any questions that anyone may have.
So on page forty, we have a letter from Matthew Coles?
Yes, that's our recommendation.
And is that your, your BG consultants? Okay.
He actually, I plan on being here and I had an emergency meeting called right before, so, and he's very familiar with the project, we worked on it, so.
All right, I'm not going to complain about it, something that's under our engineer's estimate, but is it unusual that we only got one bid for a project this big?
Honestly, no, not when you have a local, highly reputable firm.
That there's no mobilization cost, so it's hard to compete?
It can be at times.
But they did put mobilization in here, fifty-five thousand dollars, no, fifty-one thousand, one hundred dollars for mobilization? And that was my question. They're here in town, why is there a fifty-one thousand?
Mobilization is a catch-all. It'll cover all the bonds, all the insurance, it can cover a lot of differing things. That's a cost of doing projects for them, it, maybe that makes, it's hard to say exactly what all that encompasses, but it may have made some of the other items cheaper, it's just...
But you were saying, because we had a local bidder, that the other people didn't bid because we had a local bid, because probably they expected that there wouldn't be mobilization charge, they were going to save on that, but we didn't?
No, that's, he's saying...
It's a total project.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, it's not that they wouldn't be a mobilization charge, it's that they are so close that nobody else could probably compete, or thought they could compete with their startup costs, because anybody else would be coming from Topeka, Salina, Manhattan, and that distance adds to that, adds to their mobilization costs.
Right. Their estimated, your engineer's estimate is fifty-five thousand dollars, and that would be taking anybody who came from Topeka or whatever, and ours came in at fifty-one thousand one hundred dollars for somebody who's right here at the edge of town?
In twenty-five years of doing this, it's mobilization, as I said, is more of a catch-all. And it's, it's hard to say exactly where, there is definite cost for somebody to walk across the street into a project. There's insurance, the bonds, everything that's allocated in that front end, so everybody has those components. Like I said, many times, it can also be a cash flow component, because they can get some of that dollar quicker than they would in an installation portion, so they make their installation unit cost maybe a little bit cheaper because they have those dollars there. Ultimately, the number you see at the bottom, I am confident that's their number, and somebody else coming in probably didn't feel that they could compete at that number.
Yeah, and I'm not going to complain.
I understand your question, I can't honestly give you an exact reason why.
Okay, when you, did you offer this engineer's estimate to other contractors?
No, nobody sees that, that is actually something that we opened publicly at the bid.
Okay.
So no one sees that.
Did they see the scope? Did they get to see the scope?
Yes. Everybody has a bid form, there's a seven-page bid form, that anybody that got plans for the project was a, was a plan holder, that was included in there. Everybody would have submitted exactly the same format.
This is the same scope, okay. Thank you.
No difference in that, yes. Good question.
When's projected start time on this project?
September twentieth.
It's going to be completed in how long?
Thirty-five to forty days.
And by then?
Yeah, this year.
By then, if the weather gets cool, what's going to happen? They're still going to lay it?
Not according to KODA specs.
Well, it's happened before here, I'm just going to put it that way.
Okay. Well, we are involved in that side of the project as well.
I'd like to see it late till next spring, but you know, that's my personal opinion on it. I just, you're pushing the parameters of fall infringement and the heat and the highway and stuff, it just does not adhere to the highway, onto the brick streets and stuff.
I think we could definitely, well, the initial impetus right now is to award the project, we could, we could award it contingent upon maybe having a direct discussion with them in that regard. And what would be, happen, you know, I don't have their exact layout, are they going to do all the north first, and if it gets too cold, we would stop or something like that. I think that's fine to have that caveat. Yeah, actually, we were thinking it'd probably be next year, but they're looking to, I said the twentieth, that's another job, sorry, the eighteenth.
So that was the earliest date they could start, was the eighteenth?
They have a day limit total, and they're starting, we need to have all the funds expended by June thirtieth of next year.
Right.
Is technically the timeframe, so. So they really are open to start, whenever they start, they have a certain amount of time that's in the, in the contract documents. I have had projects to where we've done a certain portion, and weather or other issues come about, we issue a stop work order, clean up where we're at, and then come back later. We've done things that way.
Do we have to pay costs for that, additional costs when we do that?
No, we would, we would not, no.
How does this fit into our budget? Do we plan to?
Well, we already have a budget.
Budgets.
For 2017.
There's three hundred thousand, it will come from, well, up to three hundred thousand, I'll have to look.
The money, the money will stay there.
Okay. We have to spend it by June thirtieth.
Okay.
But it's one of those where we spend all the money and then they reimburse us at the end, so if you would split it, we wouldn't get that reimbursement until 2018.
That's a good, good point.
Which is the three hundred thousand dollars you're referencing.
In that, yeah, in that, we're looking at it as well.
So, how do you guys feel, when it, proceed, you want to award it, and you want to give them direction on when you want it done, or?
Well, there could be a lot of nice days if the start date's September eighteenth. Lot of good working days.
I think if we, I think there's definitely potential that we could run into things, you know, you have a lot more experience with that here locally, so I think it's something that we, we discuss and say, that's okay to do a notice to proceed, but with these caveats, and we would sit down, you still have another step. What this does, I provided Austin the contract documents, if it's awarded, we'll contact them, have them pick them up in the morning. They have to get all their bonding, their insurance, they have to go through, sign the agreements, then it comes back to you. You'll have another step which can be done locally, you know, typically is done by administration, but you'll issue a notice to proceed date, which at this point in time, they would request being the eighteenth, but we can discuss with them before that, definitely, and I think it's prudent with those concerns.
So at this time, we would just approve their bid and not necessarily the timing?
You're not authorizing, this is not authorizing them to start at all, there's another step that has to be taken, so.
Okay. With that being said, do you guys have any other questions for Daniel?
Do we have to put this in a contract that, the contingency? I mean, because they can either say yes or no to that, I mean, depending on if they...
We can always issue the stop work order. I mean, that's, that's where we're, we have the power to, like...
There are state specifications of particular issues, so if we got a cold snap that comes in really early, we would be stopping anyway. There's somewhat, because they're at the end of the season, they are somewhat at risk, because if they would wait till the spring, they know they're not going to have any other issues other than precip.
Pardon me, they probably are...
Precipitation, rate of it.
Yes.
But if they do this now, as any other project, they're going to try to get as much done as they can in the season, there's probably going to be one or two, you know, maybe they're small projects, hopefully it's not this project, that may run into those cold leathers, and there's, there's parameters that we call.
Well, I don't know if, if product to do this job, do they have certain bid times? Like, are we looking at, if we wait till spring, are we looking at an increase in materials costs? I mean, do they do that the first of the year, or they do that in springtime, or summer? Is there a certain...
No, this, this is a straight bid as it is. Sometimes, I'll be in Western Kansas, some of the jobs we bid, we put it on an index that might be if it's later or earlier, there might be a slight modification in costing, but this one doesn't have that on it. So the bid, as you see it, is the bid, it'll be the timing and those types of issues. We would need, I would suggest we would say right upfront, what's the timeframes, here's our concerns, how will you address those concerns? And I believe they would be very open to doing that, and by your next meeting, we'd have an update to that.
All right. I would enter to a motion.
To approve the notice of award, that's what we're approving right now, and authorize for Hall Brothers for the Clink project, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Say one.
This is just accepting the...
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aideau? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
All right, Austin, you can move along.
All right. The next on the list is cleaning of the water tower, the east water tower and the tension tank, and I got two bids for us, hoping for three, but third one never panned out, didn't want to put in a serious bid. There are two bids, and there is a large discrepancy between each one of them. One of them is a strictly, we go around cleaning tanks, the other one is a, we clean tanks on the side sort of thing, that's not their main thing. So the one that cleans tanks for a living, and that's all they do, is the cheaper one, and the other one is, is the larger one. So the cheaper one was National Wash Authority, and the other one's Pittsburgh Tank. Both are nationally known companies. I got recommendations, especially, they automatically send the recommendations for National Wash Authority, but I also requested some local ones. So they have clean tanks in Bueller, Kansas City, Lower Nebraska, they have a standing contract in the Kansas City area to clean their air, one of their tanks, I forget which city, but...
This interior and exterior?
No, this is just exterior, just to get the mold and mildew off the outside, the black stuff. And I was having a discussion with the mayor and our attorney, and between us all, we kind of came to the consensus that we, if we were to accept the lower bid, we should also include a contract with the, with the document, which actually National Wash Authority said that's pretty typical, they don't have a contract themselves, they accept us to sign this, or us telling, us telling them, they can go ahead, or the city can come up with a contract, which Craig has agreed to. So if you were, unless something comes up, if you were to accept the lowest bid from National Wash Authority, I would propose contingent on the providing of a contract, an acceptable contract from our city attorney.
The discussion came because on, I noticed on page forty-eight, they had terms and conditions with that company, that some of those I thought were pretty good ideas to have, that weren't listed on National Wash Authority. So Craig, Austin talked to Craig, Craig agreed that we could include some of those that we seem are, that are pertinent, like the liability insurance, and like if it's guaranteed for twelve months, things like that. So he would probably go through here and pick out what he felt was reasonable, and it sounds like National Wash is used to that, that we could add that as a, any of these terms that you feel are important, that we needed to add to their contract. I mean, the difference was ten thousand on one versus thirty-three on the other, so I thought it was a huge difference, that's why I came in and asked Austin about it. But they're not opposed to adding some of these terms and conditions, so what we would do is go ahead. Would we approve anything tonight?
Just approve the bid, that way I can tell them, yeah, contingent on the contract.
Contract being drafted by Craig for the next meeting?
Yes.
Is that all right?
I move to approve the bid of nine thousand eight hundred and five dollars and fifty cents from National Wash Authority to clean both the east water tower and tension tank, and to come out of the Water Revenue Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Discussion?
Okay.
I don't know how much Craig charges to draft a contract, but since we know what we want to go in it, why don't we ask National Wash Authority to draft the contract, and we don't pay an attorney to draft a contract?
She said, she, the person I talked to said they don't do that.
They don't, they don't offer contracts?
They don't, they don't offer contracts, like I said, they, they don't do the contracts, they, they allow us to provide a contract, and they, I mean, that's, we want something that we agree with, not, because if, I don't know.
They probably operate across enough jurisdictions, it's not worth messing with it and taking a chance.
Yeah.
Well, I would think that she, that we would just take this as a starting point, I mean, Austin, you can go through and decide which of these are pertinent, and then he's got both documents and say yea or nay, recommendation, so it's a...
Pretty simple?
Yeah. I was going to say, Austin can start with the first draft, is that your concern?
Yes.
Yeah, and all you're going to do is actually draft terms and conditions, right? It's going to be like an addendum to the bid, right?
Right.
Okay. That works for me.
All right, we'll have Austin drafting it based on these terms and conditions. You can go through and decide which you think are important, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Does that help you?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, yes, that helps a lot.
All right. Any further discussion?
Be done this year.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it said twelve thirty-one at the top.
Oh, yeah, they, their bid lasts till twelve thirty-one.
Exploration day.
But no, I think they're capable enough to come in and do that.
Man the hoses.
Okay, we had a first and a second? Okay. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven-one. You don't want ours cleaned?
I just don't think we need to do it at this time, I'm not saying that we can never do it, but I think we can put off.
But did you see that, have you looked at the one, or is that?
One million gallon.
One million gallon tank?
I see that, but I just think something we can just pull it off, do it later.
We cleaned it three years ago, I don't remember cleaning it, I was on council four years ago, when did we clean? We cleaned the inside and out.
And the outside at the same time.
No, I was thinking we cleaned the inside and out when we refurbished the water towers.
Correct.
Up on Seventeenth Street.
We did, we did that, the big one up there, yeah, but we also did the outside.
Did that one too.
Pretty sure.
We cleaned the outside of that water tank when we did the, did all the refurbishment, I don't think we did either.
I don't think so. Maybe we checked on that, I don't think it's ever been cleaned as long as we've had it.
I think it's only three, three, four years.
Seems like we didn't, like I asked about it, we weren't going to do it or something.
Okay, well, it looks bad, so I think it'd be good to do, and Debbie, will you research when we did it last?
I don't know.
Is that a deal?
Yeah.
And put it in the, put it in the highlights?
I'd like to know why it's doing that, why does it, it looks nasty?
Condensation.
It brings me to question.[1794.82]
Condensation.
The other tanks don't do that.
So, that's the same thing on the, on what we're cleaning off, on the east one?
The reason the one tension looks so bad is because everybody goes by all the dirt and stuff coming off the road there, when it's damp and the morning clings to it.
What makes me question the quality of the water on the inside when the outside looks so bad?
But that's why we want it to look nice.
Leaking through.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so that's all done. All right. Number four is done.
All right. Monthly financials. After few issues were pointed out on mine, I had some compared to Debbie's numbers. Mine were a little off, but I went back through and corrected them. It's not in this document. But overall, the general fund has came back within $10,000 of last year's, at this point, fund balance. So, that's a good step in the right direction. And moving forward, I think we can still improve on that, so we can meet the goal you have set for me, 425 or 400, yeah, 425 by the end of the year, as long as we keep making improvements on that. I've also included a nice little graph at the end to show you what exactly, where we stand in the year. Which you can see the percent of budget spent in the general fund is 52%. And that is below, let's say, if we were going off of spending all our money, we should be at 58% right now. But that number includes, because a lot of the payments we've made are like, we're at, that includes like paying for the recreation and all that stuff, but I don't know where I was going with that, let's see.
The library?
Yes.
It's showing like 89.95%?
Yes.
Spent, and then the library employee benefit? 88% already?
Yes, because we get money in and we ship it right to them.
Okay, so it does-
They pay their own bills.
Yeah. Yeah, we give them the money, it is just the tax dollars in, tax dollars out, as we spend it. But as you can see, the water, the sewer, the street and highway are all in the 20%. Employee benefits is at 32% right now. I think we're all looking pretty good. And then July ending balances, you can see the comparison from this year to last year. And water revenue is still up. Sewer revenue has surpassed last year's fund balance. And swimming pool sales tax is also above what it was. Sales taxes improved quite a bit. And then number of days cash on hand, we, it shows you what a year looks like. If we were to compare our cash balance to a year, we have 220 some in water revenue and 120 in sewage. And that just gives you an idea of how long, just operating as is, if we had a shut off of funds.
Looking good. Which we hope not.
Which we hope not. But emergency, but that, those numbers do not include our, our-
And budget of funds?
Not the, like the water utility fund and the sewage replacement fund.
The reserve fund?
The reserve funds, yes. Does not include any of that. So, you look at those numbers, typically a recommended amount is 90 days of operation. So, you take our operating fund, and they are standalone the 90 days. And then you add in our reserves, and we are really above board.
We supersede the recommended amounts in all categories. We're in a pretty good check.
Yeah. Any questions? Did you like the graphs?
I did, definitely.
Very good, thank you.
Be true to the thousand words.
Okay. And then if there's no questions, as long as nobody has a major concern, I would like to close down City Hall for the eclipse on the 21st. And basically, the idea is that all the staff in City Hall goes out and helps with the event. And it's not, they're going home to sit on the couch or anything like that. It's, they're going to be in, they've already shown interest in helping park cars and all that stuff. So, like I said, if there's no major complaint, I'm going to shut down City Hall. And I've already talked with, my only major concern before even considering this was the bill payment. Bills are due on the 22nd. I talked with Sammy on that, because she's the major lynchpin in that, and she said, she thought about it for a little bit and said it wouldn't be a problem, because it's the 21st, she, everybody can drop off their bill, they can pay online, they have all these options, or they can call on the 22nd to make their payments. And it shouldn't be a major issue, because that's when everything closes up.
Is there any way that, or are you thinking about, like if someone calls City Hall, that that call's transferred to, say, your cell phone?
We, the first thought was to put it on a holiday mode. That way they can leave a message of some sort right away, and we'll go, we are out assisting in the events today, and please leave a message. And I would get my messages via email. And that, I mean, that's pretty much how I would see it, because I would be out there busy as well. They sort of-
So, they will have contact with somebody in the case of an emergency?
And as always, we recommend, if there is an emergency, please call 911, whether it's a water leak or anything above that. Our crews will still be out there, working outside.
I was going to ask about the other departments, it's all business as usual.
Business as usual, possibly the Parks Department helping out with, because she is really, Michelle is really having problems finding people to help. To get people safely in and out of Lake, or Lakeview, rather, we might enlist the Parks Department to help with that. But other than that, it's pretty typical, business as usual. Water sewer guys will be out. Street crew will still be out.
So, you're going to say, leave a message, or call 911?
And there is, there is a button that they can press if they need, if it is an emergency, we can set it, it's already set up. If they need to talk to somebody right now, they can press the button and it'll transfer them to the police department, or, and then it rolls on to the sheriff's department if nobody's available from there. So, if they really need to talk to somebody, then that's, there's an app.
This is all possible with our new phone system?
Yes.
Okay, and our 911 responders, which is at the sheriff's department?
Yeah.
Are they're being notified that we're shutting the City Hall down for the day, so they understand why they're getting the calls?
Yeah. And they're pretty used to getting those rollovers, yeah.
So, this, only people that won't be working that day will be the City Hall staff, but they'll be working in the community?
Yes.
So, we can tell our constituents that they're working offsite?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's onsite, we're in the city.
Offsite City Hall. Out of City Hall, but they're at work?
Yes, we're going to be at work.
I just want to be able to say-
Except the Parks, some of the Parks people will be up there too.
They'll be up there, we'll have the fire department up there. I mean, it'll be a whole bunch of city-
Because it's a paid day.
Yes.
You're still going to pay everybody.
Still going to pay everybody.
So, I just wanted to make sure they're working somewhere.
Yes, we're going to, we're going to work, yep.
Okay. Is everyone all right with that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Consensus? All right. Are you done with that? Did we, did we have enough solar glasses? Was that the, have you heard?
Well, there's no way to tell if we have enough. We've been, we've been ordered, we ordered 1,000 to start with, then we ordered a smaller batch, and then we ordered another 1,000, then we ordered another 1,000. We, it's, we've been trying to keep up. Stores have also been purchasing them to sell, so they've been helping out as well. We've got groups coming, excuse me, that also have their own solar glasses.
So, you're not waiting?
I mean, I am, but there's no way to tell how many we need until that day. And it's been-
I had a couple of calls saying I can't find solar glasses.
It's been rough going to actually get them here. So, and that's, that's the issue.
Well, maybe we need to say that these glasses can be picked up at Chamber of Commerce, CJ Express East and West.
That's in the paper.
Garden and Eden, is it in the paper? Dr. Nelson, okay, Wagon Wheel?
Until they're gone.
Until they're gone.
Buy your glasses today.
Get your glasses, get your glasses.
Yeah, we tried, we tried, we got the certified version, and we tried to keep up, not knowing exactly how this once in a lifetime event was going to go. So, we ordered what we thought was going to happen, and then we ordered more.
So, what you should do is go down and buy them all out and then mark them out?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, so everybody's been buying, we haven't officially bought for everybody. I've bought mine, everybody else has bought theirs. I will make sure everybody, because each one of our employees has been purchasing them as they go. I'll make sure everybody has one.
Or don't look up. Okay. City clerk, it's a birthday girl, happy birthday, happy to have you.
Thank you. I don't have much, just wondering about league conference, which is going to be September 16th through the 18th.
And what you talk?
Few people have expressed interest in just wanting to get those details ironed out and finished.
Sorry.
What? Oh, you're on business, okay.
Yeah, I would be interested.
Okay.
I'm going to go, I'm going to go down that Saturday though, because that homecoming's the 15th and the tailgate, so I won't go down to that Saturday.
What date would you like to know by? That way we have a cutoff date.
I think we're okay. I mean, we can, there's always other cities looking for rooms if we need to cancel a reservation or something like that, but yeah, first of September would be good.
Okay. Just need to know by first of September.
So, you have me down for Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, come back Monday? Okay. All right. Anything else?
Darlene, and let me know, email me or call me. That's it today, go ahead, thank you.
All right, and then your birthday? All right. Standing committee report on the street, I just want to say, I've had several people call about our street sweeper and the dusty streets. And so, first and foremost, we need to encourage our residents to drive slower. When they see gravel on a street, we need to, the people need to drive slower, because they know that we don't have a street sweeper. So, I just encourage all our residents to drive slower wherever there's, looks like it's gravel, because we don't have a street sweeper right now.
Any word on it?
I called him today, and pretty much the same answer as he's given me. Well, he gave me, or one of them gave me last week, that they were expecting the part last week, well, now he's expecting the part this week. And when I pressed him for it, he's pretty much told me there's nothing he could do about it, because it was off in some other city.
Is it from the manufacturer?
It's at their main, I would assume it's their manufacturer. It's at their main location that has everything they need apparently.
Well, if it's from the manufacturer, you call the manufacturer and say, why is it taking six months for this part?
Is it made overseas? What's the story?
No, it's made in here in the United States.
Is this a passive aggressive stance on their part, because we insisted this part be replaced?
Well, I can't speak for the guy I talked to, but it's rough, it's rough going.
It's, let's say, we've, it's been there for six months.
Takes it off to do business with this company now.
And we refused it, because we felt it was not a safe piece of machinery, when they said that there wasn't, that that was all that needed to be fixed, and they weren't going to fix anymore. And Austin and, who, Gundelfinger? Gary took initiative and went down there and drove it and looked at it and said, it is not safe, it is not acceptable. And so, they had to do more work that they didn't want to do, and I'm just wondering if they're just sort of, you know, they're just sort of being passive aggressive.
They told us in the beginning that they had to send it off. And they took it out, sent it off. I finally dragged a number out of them, that the piece itself was going to cost $2,500, and dependent on what actually happened.
We're fighting six months over a $2,500 piece?
See what I'm saying?
Are you kidding me?
It doesn't seem right, does it?
But, and plus, plus laboring taken in and out. No, it's, but we didn't know the $2,500 until I dragged it out of them. He, in the beginning, it was, I don't know how much this cost is going to be expensive, and that's all I could get out of it.
And it's not like we have a lot of choices where we can take this thing. Not a lot of people work on stuff like this, so it's not like, it's not like, I mean, they kind of have us by the, by the-
No, I, you know, I told Austin, I said, do you need to go drive down there and talk to somebody? We need to get the street sweeper back. If we need to talk to our insurance agent, we need to talk to our insurance, we can't just, oh, it's another month, it's another month. Our residents are obsessed.
See, there should be some incentive. They should have had to pay to give us a machine to work with. That would encourage them to get busy and give us our machine back, because it's costing them every day that they have to provide us with a machine to work. Like Second Street, it is a dust bowl down there, and we need to, that machine is necessary to do that, to take care of that.
So, I'm, people aren't unhappy. We have to do chip and seal now, because it's hot.
Exactly.
And, but we don't have a street sweeper, and so this is really bad. So, I told Austin that if he used to drive down there and talk to him, drive down there, if you, you know, whatever he needs to do, he needs to jump up and down. So, okay, on the chip and seal, as long as we're talking about chip and seal, we had five routes. We've done two or three. I noticed we paid for two loads of oil. Have we done three?
Two loads of, no, we've, the plan was to do two, well, two loads of oil equals two, two loads of chip and seal. And with the troubles we were having with the oiler, it pretty much laid down one and a half at most. So, we've laid down one and a half. It's-
Of the routes.
Of the routes.
So, we still have three loads we plan to do?
Yeah. And that, once we get, because we got the oiler fixed, we got the chip spreader fixed, and once we get our guys back lined up, we'll get back to chip and seal and-
How are they going to start again?
After the 23rd.
We're going to start running out of warm days, you know?
I know.
This week's supposed to be nice and warm, except Wednesday might rain, but I can't see why they-
It's because we have a levy to work on, and if we get our levy accreditation revoked, we don't get FEMA money if our town's destroyed. And I think the levy is important to work on right now.
Well, the levy though, that'll give us so many days to correct it. That's how it worked last time with Juneman. Remember, we had Juneman come in? They'd come in and give us a timeframe. It's not like they just disqualified.
When'd he come to work on the oiler?
Uh, this last week. He finally got back in touch with us and came in, found the computer issue, taught us how to fix it, so we can look into the computer and fix if it has an issue next time. And then told us about an issue about starting and stopping it, that we can adjust for next year, just to prepare, so.
Have we already crack sealed all the routes?
We, yeah, we cracked seal all as much, as much as we have.
So, I guess, I'm, I feel the same way you guys do, that these are the hot days, we need to do chip and seal.
We need to get it done.
They can do the other stuff. When do you got to have that done?
The inspections on the 23rd.
Of August?
Of August. And he notified us of that last month, and this is like, this is first time in four and a half, five years that they've come and inspected it, so.
Couldn't have been that long ago. Juneman's the one that came, and we were on council.
Yeah, that was up on the end though. They had to do much work. They come and inspected it, and they did. Had Juneman's do some earthwork up there.
Right, but we were on council then, so it was at least within the last four years, four and a half.
So, I had made that, there was some ruts in the levy that would give us big, big problems if, if they came and saw them. They got those fixed, and then we got a lot of the trees taken care of. then we got, um, a lot of the trees taken care of. Um, a lot of it's been weeded it now, uh, and then we're gonna have a couple of the, the gates scooped out, uh, because-
What about the inside drainage ditch? Seeing as we're going on that, whose responsibility is that?
The inside drainage ditch.
On the inside of the levy?
On the inside of the railroad property. Inside, if it's railroad property, the railroad is-
On railroad property.
Then it's our responsibility.
Okay, well, we haven't taken care of the trees in it then yet.
What are you talking about, from the overpass and then the-
From the overpass north, yes.
Okay.
That can be done when it's cold.
It can be. It's one of those projects that has not been done ever since that has been there.
You've been talking about it, I know. You've talked about it, you've brought it up several times.
We're, we're working on the trees where they would ding us, and it's not, the way I've been told, it's not that there's trees in that drainage area, it's the trees on the outside, right next to the levy. And, and if the levy gets swept away, because it's being eroded by trees.
And I understand that, but you also gotta understand all the trash and debris that runs down through the storm sewers and goes down there. Every time there's a tree there, it diverts, plugs up water, catches trash, debris, coming out of the storm sewer, and makes a pileup in the drainage ditch. So the trees need to come out of there.
Okay.
So, you gotta look at both sides of it.
And they need to be sprayed, so they don't come back.
Yes.
Torridon.
Yeah, I was trying to think what that was, Torridon.
Okay, so that's our chip and seal. We, we, we definitely want them to continue the chip and seal, even though we don't have a street sweeper. I guess that's the thing I have.
Yeah.
So, starting-
It's gotta get done.
It's gotta get done.
Well, it's warm, because-
Well, it's warm. So if you can free them up, just, chip and seal, you probably should. Okay, anybody else for street?
Yeah.
I noticed, uh, in Blue Rapids, they have these small speed indicators just on poles. Have you no, and the rest of you noticed them?
I have.
They were the ones that normally set at the school, Darlene.
Yeah.
And they said they wouldn't, they didn't recommend them.
They don't recommend them for here in town?
Not enough traffic here, I guess.
Well, I think it, it helps. I always pay attention when I pass through there. I s- I know where you're talking about, in the Rapids, and I always look at that, and I look at my speed right away, and I adjust my speed if I'm going faster than what, you know, what the speed limit is. I think it's a deterrent, I think it helps.
Well, I wondered if they were very expensive, then we could put them where we've had the complaints about speed.
They're only about this big, but they flash, and they got LED lights in them, so they're very noticeable.
I don't know if they are solar.
Yes.
What they, is that why they're solar?
Solar and battery.
You wanna look into them?
How much?
See what they are.
I'll look, see how much they are.
See what the chief says. Okay. Todd?
Um, I had somebody ask me, they, uh, they, they wondered what the process was, or what, what the first step was for them to get an alley vacated, because it's currently going underneath their garage. They discovered this when they had their property apparently surveyed, that they're, this-
Their garage is on the alley currently?
It's literally in the right of way. Um, and it looks like it's been there for probably fifty or a hundred years.
Is it, is it in, is it in the middle of the alley? Like-
Pretty close.
If it's-
It's overlapping into the alley off of the property.
Okay, if it's crossing over the middle, I wouldn't recommend-
There's like seventy-year-old trees, and there's no, there shouldn't be. I know I looked into where it was. They asked me not to say anything, 'cause they're worried.
Yeah.
But, they said there's no, there's no utilities. I know where it's at, I've looked into it and stuff, so-
I guess my main point was, if it's in the middle of the alley and you vacate it, is there another property on, on the side?
They own both sides.
Okay, then there's no problem.
So, I, so, they just wanted to know what the process was, if they should have something drafted and come, or they can come to you, or they can come to Dave, have a look at it.
Make the request.
Make the request.
Make, make the request to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll have to double check to make sure-
Well, I know, and I told them that. I said, "There'll be a process," but they basically didn't wanna, they were scared we'd come in and tell them to take their-
I'd take grandfather, after all this time?
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure they're paying property tax on the outer building.
Probably, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
I got a couple of people asking me up here, 13th and Center, on the northwest corner there, in the street, there's weeds growing up that high, by the courthouse there. And, and I wonder, the, the property owner's just up to the curb, right? Is responsible for the weeds and stuff? There's a lot of streets, there's cars sitting on the streets that got weeds built up underneath them, they're three, two to three feet high. There's a lot of places around town.
Those are, all, all street terms.
And them cars ain't been moved for six months, I'll bet, because the weeds are tall underneath them. I don't even know if they're property tagged or not. Doesn't the police go around and look at them tags and stuff on that?
If they see a tag that's out of date, they usually take care of it.
I mean, do they notice that the weeds are growing up, that these cars aren't moved, or?
I don't, I can't speak for the individual police officers that are patrolling.
We probably need to have Dave do a drive-around, or something like that.
There's four or five of them I've seen.
Will you ask Dave to go by? Now, but that's just to check to see if, if it has a current tag. We could do something if it's not.
What about the weeds underneath the car?
And the weeds around are the city's responsibility, right? 'Cause that's our street. So we need to have weed control-
But up here, it's, it's pretty bad, you know? We got all this solar eclipse coming, and they had all the guys downtown clean up, but up there across from the courthouse there, that, on that corner, looks pretty bad there.
You wanna ask the street to look at that?
Okay.
But, I, it's right. I mean, I, I see in between the brick grass everywhere, and-
Well, I mean, if it's down, but this here stuff's getting up there pretty tall.
And similar place to the curb and gutter, it's just spreading out and kinda covering up everything. It's really out of control.
They got little trees, trees, little trees growing on it.
But, but the curb, the curb becomes ours. It's a curb ours. The curb's ours. So anything over the curb is ours.
Backside the curb, but it's property.
So, well, we haven't had a code report in months, really.
That's true.
Code update.
A code update, you get that, right, Austin?
Yeah. Wouldn't, didn't we have one last month?
Yeah, we had one here, one month.
Well, it was June. It was-
Alongside the parking lot?
To the middle of June.
Yeah, but that's, that's on the parking lot where we're at, and then he started at the field.
Uh, is there, is there, um, we belong to this northeast group-
Greenwater Planning Commission?
Yes. And will they go out and look at, look at a city's codes, look at how they're enforcing them, or what needs to be enforced?
They, they, recently, for money, they will enforce our codes, yes.
They will enforce them for a fee?
Yes.
Well, I think we just need to make that a priority. I think we've all said, and it, we, it's agreed that it's a priority to have code enforcement. We just need to make it happen. You need to make it happen. How about that?
Yeah, and it's-
So you can add that on your due.
Yeah.
All right?
Okay.
All right. Anyone else? Water, wastewater? Parks and Rec? Cemetery Airport? Police and Fire? Admin and Finance?
Parks and Rec. Um, I did have, I talked to some people who were staying in the park. They were bicyclists, so I kinda sought them out. Um, and they asked if there were showers available, and this was after hours, pools closed and everything. They were surprised the bathroom at the park didn't have showers. And you can, to me, it looks like it was built like maybe they thought at some point it would have showers, and they were just kind of, I guess, disappointed, because they were tent campers. That there was not really anywhere to, you know, for a shower house or whatnot. I told, "Well, the pool's open tomorrow," you know, and gave them the kind of that spiel, but is that something that probably wouldn't be worth us trying to do, is finish those bathrooms with showers? I kinda, in retrospect now, think it'd have been really cool to do the pool in such a way where it could be more easily separated, the showers, from the rest of it, you know, to have it close at a certain time, open at a certain time, but I just thought it was something I should bring.
Yeah.
And we'd have to keep track of it's the problem, and the winterization, I know, is the other part of that problem. But it was one of those where, I know there's other places that do have access, and we don't have fairgrounds. A lot of places, that's where their showers are, but I don't know, it'd be something I think in the future, if we end up doing some kind of project, it's something to keep in mind, especially if, you know, traffic. Looks like we've had a lot of people camping. I don't know what our numbers actually look like, but I've seen a lot of tent campers, and they aren't gonna have showers, so-
They, they, it looks like they used to have showers in there. Do you agree, Kevin?
Did they have that, or they took them out?
They did years ago.
Okay, I didn't know if they were ever in there.
They took them out, because, do you know why?
Because they broke them all.
They were-
They had when we were kids.
Vandalism.
They, they came, yeah.
Vandalism.
I wanted somebody else to play, but they broke them.
We do have running water there, though.
When you were a kid, they broke them? Your friends broke them?
Yeah, well, they did to them guys.
Roddy bunch. Yeah, no, they used to be in there, but it just-
They did. And then we had them handicap sides, and then-
Well, you know, I guess what we could do is that we could-
And they're cold in Ohio.
Make it a policy that they could somehow use the pool bathrooms if they're camping out. You know, just make that as a courtesy.
I think it'd just, it'd be kinda nice. I mean, these folks are here for four days, so I figured they'd probably spend some money in the community. I saw them eating in two different places.
So, I mean, and from that standpoint, we could make it, uh, some type of courtesy that they can use the showers. They have to go when the pool's open, obviously, so-
Right, right.
But, at least we have it there at the park.
Yeah, I was gonna say, at least it's nearby.
Yeah.
That's it.
All right. And Admin and Finance. So we're done with standing committees. City Attorney is not here. I don't know of any reason for an executive session. Everyone else okay? Appointments, weight determinations, I don't have anything. So, we're at roundtable discussion. And the only thing I wanted to say was, the American Legion team got to go to Nationals after all. They won one of the games, they came close in the other two, so they, uh, made Marysville shine at Nationals, so that was exciting. And, uh, the solar eclipse, I know no one knows about that, but, uh, we're getting a lot of publicity, and we, you know, they antici- Austin was nice enough to, uh, I asked for a schematic of a thousand parking spaces near Lakeview, just to give me some peace of mind, and he gave me one. Although, we do need volunteers. I should state that. And I think you've sent out an email of us to volunteer, and, um, since it is a major city event, I hope you guys all consider volunteering at least in one slot. I think I'm gonna help with parking that Monday, just to see the, everybody come. But, he, he said that we can park a thousand cars, eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred cars.
If we park in-
In the Lakeview area.
If we park them correctly, so that's why we're gonna work at parking them correctly.
Will you explain the science of eclipses to us, Mayor?
The science of it? Um, yeah. The moon goes in between us and the sun.
Cool.
Cool.
Do that.
If people want to volunteer, who do they talk to? Who's coordinating this?
Michelle Weitzel.
Because it's two days of events.
Michelle Weitzel.
Michelle Weitzel's doing the volunteering.
Be patient with her. I think she's been so busy, she's, I talked to her on the phone, didn't get it, it's all tough, and she lost her voice, so she's definitely working her tail off on this.
Yeah, so please volunteer, and, it's a good way to talk to people that are coming through our city and, and helping out. With that being said, that's all I have. Keith?
If we was gonna volunteer, what time would we have to be up there?
Though, I, I noticed that the, the Monday one started at 7:00 AM. The parking spot was 7:00 to 10:00.
Yeah, it's, there's two-hour slots and three-hour slots. It, you could probably ask Michelle, and she'll let you come in anytime you wanted to.
But that email was sent that it says you can show, but on Sunday, do you know when the slots start? Is it noon?
Uh, she has slots open from 1:00 to 9:00.
On Sunday?
On Sundays.
Yeah, and you don't have to work 1:00 to 9:00.
And from 7:00 AM to-
In Inchen's, and you can pick and choose what you wanna do.
Two or three, somewhere in there.
Somewhere in the park, in the shade, so-
Four to 7:30, and then 7:30 to 9:00, I think, and then there's one before that.
Yeah, on Sunday, yeah.
On Sunday.
So, so please volunteer. Okay. Thanks, Keith, for volunteering. Okay, Bill.
Good words, I remember. I don't have anything to say.
You're afraid you're gonna volunteer, too? What's, what slot can we put you in, Bill?
No Keith would have volunteered.
All right. Darlene?
Uh, no, nothing further.
Brad?
Two things. Uh, one, putting on a different hat as president of Marshall County Arts Cooperative. I wanna thank the city for moving forward with the air conditioning and heating units. The, um, the one in the main lot, the main unit has got problems, the heat doesn't work, and then the air conditioning in the backside actually failed, so we're kind of, uh, a little desperate, so appreciate that.
We're very thankful for that organization in our community. You bring a lot of the arts to us, and we're very blessed.
We are, we are, so, um, one question on the eclipse, or, that convention tourism, did we get a new brochure, or does the bro-
We haven't gotten the full brochure. She, she's, she's been in the middle, she's been in the middle, in the middle of everything. We've, she's been working on a couple of different brochures, actually. One for the visitors, not one for the eclipse, but one for the Visitors Bureau, and then one for, uh, down here at the murals, and it's just-
You want a brochure for the eclipse specifically?
Well, no.
No, just for the Visitors Bureau.
His or her service on brochures?
Yeah.
Okay.
And she's, Brenda's making copies, so either, does she know she needs to make more copies of the, okay?
And did you hear, Vicki, that they're gonna put, uh, a stand for brochures at Pony Statue Park? I figured that would make you delighted.
Now we're talking.
Because she's asked for that like three years ago, so I figured she was jumping up and down in the highlights when she read that.
I'm glad to hear that. And we really need them other places, too, like down in the park. I know I was walking down there one day and had two different campers stop me and ask about where the restaurants were, what restaurants, and how to get there.
Is it at the bathroom? Is there, there's-
There is.
Where the thank you things are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are brochures there.
Information.
Not right now, they're out, but we're working on it.
There, there's places to put them, yes.
Okay.
We just need to fill them up. Okay. All right. Todd?
Yep.
Vicki?
Yes, thank you. Um, I was downtown Saturday to Farmer's Market, and I think everybody should get down there. We, our Farmer's Market is getting more and more produce down there, more and more things to look at, more and more things to buy. Uh, and everything I've gotten down there is good. It's from, uh, 8:00 o'clock in the morning until 11:00 on a Saturday morning, down in the, uh, Pony Express corridor, right there, just south of that. It's a very nice place to stop and talk to people and find out what the, what the tricks are, that they're doing that makes their produce so good. But, uh, for being down there, I, uh, had to run and tell Michelle Weitzel. She had a bunch of people standing out in front of Marysville Main Street, and I had to say to her how, uh, complimentary, uh, uh, the compliments that I've received on the time that, uh, Austin and Michelle were on WIBW at 5:00, uh, with, um, what's his name, what's?
Ralph Hip.